One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools and think of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens, and there's time for public comment. As far as action items on the agenda, we ask that speakers identify themselves in their home district. We also ask to limit comments to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers in the short meeting as reasonable. And it's linked, if you have more information, then can be summarized in three minutes, please provide materials for the board's review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as the time elapses. If you have any questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school member or an administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? If you're going to make a motion or a second, can you identify yourself? Or a motion to adopt the agenda?
I saw mine.
Chris Uben seconds.
That was a motion from
That is definitely us. We'll mute myself.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Uben. All in favor, aye?
Maybe it's the three at the central office too close together. Although techno is kind of cool.
It's gonna get really old in Alright, so the motion carries. Move on to the bills. Mr. Grove, did you have opportunity to review the bill, sir?
Yes, I did, and everything looks to be in order. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that, Larry. Move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I heard a motion, I think, for Mr. Grove. Is there a second?
Chris Uben seconds.
We have a motion and a second. A second for Mr. Uben. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Beauty.
A lot of feedback.
Motion carries. Moving on to reports as superintendent. Dr. Grimsley.
I can hear you just fine. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry about technical difficulties. So we should have that taken care of. So we were having a little bit of feedback with Ms. Myers' computer, so I've asked her to mute, and that seems to have taken care of it. Ms. Bynum, you can probably unmute yourself if you need to say anything, and it should be okay now. Okay, we got that taken care of. Okay, the first item is 4.1, which is our federal program applications. And every year, these need to be completed in order for us to receive our federal funds. So we do ask that you review those for action later in the agenda. The statute for those to be approved by the state and submitted and approved by the state by June 30th hasn't changed. So this is the meaning at which we need those approvals. So those are for your perusal.
Any questions, anybody? Okay.
Okay. Amy, can you help me move through the agenda, too, as we go through these? 4.2 is our V S B A February policy update. So these are here not as essential business to vote on, but we wanted to get them up for your review a month in advance. Okay, so these, we will ask for action at the July meeting when we do have a quorum present, physical quorum present. And those are your highlights. There are quite a few of them, a lot of minor changes, but there were a few areas that we highlighted that needed our our policy committee to weigh in on, and they have done that.
Good.
Yeah, I noticed one about out-of-school students from outside of our, it was J E C. And that was interesting to me.
J C B?
Yeah, J C B.
It seems to say that we could have out-of-school enrolled students do one club and one class or two classes if they're homeschooled.
Yes. And this hasn't really changed much. This is not a new policy. We have had part-time enrollment, you know, that we can send out to to our homeschool families. We did send out a letter last last year, too, about that. Didn't get many takers on it, but maybe a renewed effort in highlighting that policy as well. But yes, you're absolutely right. Homeschool parent, families can admit students and enroll them part-time for certain classes and clubs and activities that they would then be eligible to partake in. Not so much any V H S L sports, of course, but extracurricular activities, some of those assemblies, enrichment activities, things like that. So, yes.
Hey, Dr. Grimsley. Go ahead.
Would they count for, would they count for daily attendance?
Yes, at a percentage. They would count for ADM.
And it's not a full ADM, it's some kind of
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something. It's a good idea. I mean, especially if we're heading into a time where we have to support online learning. It could be more of a way of, you know, it could propagate into the community and still be something that we can track.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Are there any other questions about these?
I assume the policy committee will look at them and
Already did.
Make a recommendation.
They have looked at them. There were a few areas that we needed to ask their opinion about whether or not to keep certain language with options. So they've done that. And then we'll ask them for their recommendation and for approval at next month's meeting. Because it doesn't fall under essential guidance to act now, but I did want to get it all before you, so the whole board can see it at least. And then we can vote when we're all together. Okay?
Yep.
All right, let's talk about COVID-19. So a huge week for us. We finally have the governor's guidance on reopening schools. That was just released as of 2 o'clock this afternoon. So we have the guidance available on board docs here. We just were just gained access ourselves this afternoon. So understandably, we have a lot to digest. I have the, you know, 136 pages I need to read tonight to bring to my team tomorrow morning, so we can get started, because we don't want to waste any time. So Amy, if you'll bring up the PowerPoint, the return to school plan PowerPoint, I'll walk through just a summary of what the governor said today and hopefully give some reassurance about how we're going to approach this and what we're actually able to do, because we do have some flexibility.
Good.
All right, so this is the governor's return to school plan. It is aligned to the phases of reopening businesses that we've already seen. So it is a phase one, two, and three, not separate from those phases. So as you saw, most of Virginia open is on phase two right now. That means we are technically on phase two as we develop our plan if we were to start something right now. All right, so move forward, please. Schools will reopen for everyone next year, but instruction will look different. Okay, and this is what he emphasized. However, again, I don't want to, I want to emphasize how that we do have local flexibility to make it work for our school division. So all of us are now required to offer new instruction, which we started in quarter four. We were one of the first ones that put out that plan and said, no, we will continue and move forward, because we think it's the best thing for our children. So we already have a good plan to move forward with that, and teachers have done a great job to wrap up quarter four. Next slide, please. So Virginia, like I said, will align to the Forward Virginia Blueprint and those phases. So, you know, whatever phase the the rest of Virginia is on, schools are on as well presumably, unless they have a variance like Northern Virginia right now, who has a delayed phasing approach. A lot of that's just based on the latest data from the Department of Health. So that's what we we look at very closely. And of course, all the work that the committees have been doing for the last several months. These, the the plan does prioritize the needs of most vulnerable learners, where in-person instruction is most essential, as well as addressing the the health and social emotional learning needs of the children, which I do appreciate that. Next slide, please. All right, so three phases and then a beyond phase. So the phase one, we've already kind of gone through and we're out of right now. But in that phase, really, there's not much you can do with the 10-person limit, social distancing. So priority was given to special ed programs and childcare for working families. You saw us working with the partnering with our childcare centers in the community to try to make this happen, and it was very successful. We did receive additional funding to make sure that happened. And so far, the only school facility being utilized for that purpose is the auxiliary gym for some. So we were able to limit activity in our building to keep, make sure we're keeping the environment safe. The phase two, you get those options as well. Plus, you can also serve in-person preschool through third grade, English language learners. Summer camps can happen in school buildings. So there's more flexibility. And I will say that any of these phases, we can apply for a variance, depending on what we are able to do, based on our community, our health data, and all of that. So this is one situation where being small is a good thing, because we're able to do a whole lot more than a lot of our larger counterparts are dealing with right now. And then phase three, students may receive in-person instruction. This can be accommodated with strict social distancing measures in place. Remember, we're already on phase two. We anticipate phase three will hopefully begin pretty simultaneously with fall reopening. There is no mandate about when schools have to reopen. We can make that determination as a locality, which, right now, the administrative team and I highly recommend trying to start school on as normal a schedule as possible for every student every day. We're small enough, we're mathematically, it makes sense. Logistically, we have some details to work out, but we're pretty confident that we're going to be able to do that in both phase two and phase three. So regardless of phase two or three, we think we're still able to meet all these guidelines and still be able to have in-person instruction for all children. That being said, we will still need plans to accommodate those vulnerable students with health needs and staff and things like that. And that will be all outlined in our own plan. Okay, next, please. Here's a little more detail about what phase one looks like that we've already moved out of. A lot stricter requirements. But again, right now, this isn't an issue, but anytime, remember, as we see the year go on, there could be a regression back to phase one or phase two. So it's going to be fluid. So at at phase one, that's when we go back to sort of what we did with quarter four. We would have to. And prioritize in-person instruction, if only if we're able to do that to meet equity needs with special needs students, probably. So that's where virtual learning takes place. Phase two, again, predominantly remote. Phase one options continue. Summers, summer camps can happen. We'll talk about that in a minute. Social distancing measures should be implemented. And again, we think we can meet all of these with every student every day, coming in with the staff we have and the facility capabilities. So we will plan to, as long as our work groups say it's feasible after we go through the whole document and be sure we're okay, hopefully bring everyone in. Phase three, they give a little bit more enhancement to that, more phase three, we're allowed to bring in everybody, but this is, again, assuming that that's not possible under phase two. And for us, again, it probably is, probably. Some precautions applied to all of these. We have to make sure we have a healthcare plan, health mitigation strategies, of course, cleaning protocols, all of those things that we can do behind the scenes. There's a lot of talk right now about staggered scheduling and not using any communal spaces and all of those things. Our goal is to make it as normal and unscary as possible, bringing kids in. So yes, we must have recess. We must have outdoor time. We must be able to use the playground and bring kids together. However, we will have strict guidance on how we're going to stagger recess enough to make sure we can clean the equipment in between. And so I want to reassure everyone, yes, we're not gonna, we're gonna make it fun and engaging and as normal as we can in this situation.
I was just wondering if we have contact tracing information in terms, and I know that we're increasing still numbers of Rappahannock County cases of COVID. I'm just wondering, is the Department of Health going to help us in terms of if some of our students or staff have been in contact with someone with COVID? How that will work?
Yes, absolutely. And that's going to be a key part of the plan that I think a lot of parents will be asking. What if, you know, somebody in our community, in our school community comes down with COVID? What are the mitigation strategies? And all that will be outlined, how that works. We do have to work hand-in-hand with the Department of Health, absolutely. As far as contact tracing to that level, yes, there are guidance questions that we have to follow for that. But then there's mitigation risk strategies for the whole school, for those classes, for, you know, so we will outline exactly how that needs to look. So you'll have all of that when we release our plan. Our local plan, I do anticipate to bring to you at the July meeting. So we have a lot of work to do in a short turnaround time to to develop our own reopening plan, which my team has already started working on that, and work groups will be forming. In fact, we've already kind of outlined some of the questions we need answered. So we'll be soliciting feedback from parents and community members and getting survey data, and also asking parents to serve on some of these committees if they so choose. So more information will be forthcoming to solicit that input. Because this is going to take all of us to do this right, but I think we can do it. I mean, if anything, Rappahannock has shown how strong we are together and how much we are willing to help each other out, and I think our parents are going to be great. I know very appreciative of allowing children to come to school every day. I've heard from a lot of our working families that are saying, if you don't open, my family is done for. I don't know what we're going to do. We can't afford this. We all have to go back to work. If school isn't open, you know, I'll lose my job. So we're hearing a lot of that. So we've we've got to keep that in mind, and we're small enough where I think we can do this safely. So if you go back to the board docs, agenda item, Amy, you can get out of this. Okay, you see all of these items here, highlighted, they're links, they're hyperlinks to all the documentation. So you can see the state health commissioner guidance. You can see the press release and the final guidance from the governor's office, as well as the this big document I put up there for you all, too, if you want to read it. And you can see everything that we have to digest and think about. Lot of considerations, of course, health and safety is paramount. But we, again, think it's vital to the physical, mental health of our students and economic stability of our families to get everybody back in school on a normal schedule if we can. So that's the major components of, any questions about the governor's announcement? Before I go on to another part of the COVID update? Okay, I'm sure we'll get plenty coming. We do plan to issue a kind of a general reassurance statement after this board meeting, just to let parents know we are on it. We're going to do everything we can to make this as normal and not scary as possible. So we have a statement that will be ready to go out, just to reassure everybody. So also, part of the COVID-19 update, there's two things. One is summer camps and summer programs that we're now allowed to have in phase two. There has been a work group working that has been very, very concerned about social isolation, the mental health of our students, screen fatigue, so much being indoors and on screens throughout quarter four, that it, we finally got the okay to say, okay, let's say we have just all these fun activities outdoors that kids can partake in, since all the summer camps have kind of gone away. And there's a lot of virtual options, but honestly, a lot of our families are pretty burned out with virtual options. They want to get outside and get the kids swimming and doing other things. So we do have an opportunity to utilize the 4-H Center potentially, as well as the Rappahannock County Park, to offer kind of day activities throughout the month of July, and some of, maybe the last week of June, if we get everything together enough. There's been some great collaboration between Headwaters and community groups and DSS and all of this, kind of the impetus from some some rising CPS concerns and services and things. So we're done. Adventure Bound is on board as well for some of our at-risk youth that we can send for some some summer programming. So basically, it sounds like the funding may be able to be granted to a fiscal agent. So what I'm sort of looking for, not a really a vote, but an okay through consensus to be able to run the funds through a grant to be able to operate, operate, operationalize this, to make it a little bit easier. So it would work like many other programs where we get a grant to fund and outside, just like our preschool grant. Those funds are pretty much passed through dollars to go to our providers to provide those slots. So it'd be a similar situation where it would just be easier to run everything through. And if we had staffing from our staff, payroll gets a lot easier if we can run it that way, too. Any questions about that or concerns?
Do you have the grants already?
It sounds like those outside sources are pooling together a lot of resources that say, yes, if we can't really do it, we could possibly use some CARES Act funding for some of it, but not the whole thing. So it sounds like there are other entities that are ready to put up the dollars, yes. And if
We should figure a way to facilitate that.
Yes. So if you're okay, I'd like to let them know that, yes, we can kind of be the central fiscal agent to make things easier if that helps.
Absolutely.
Okay. Just want to be sure you're all okay with that, because, yeah, I think it's a, absolutely. Thank you.
Me, too.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. All right, so I'll let them know that that's okay if the funds come together and sort of a grant that will work it that way. Next, for COVID, again, we are talking about being in phase two. The supervisors last week were talking about meeting places and actually getting physical forums back together. Now, the governor's ordinances do allow that in any of the phases for public government bodies to meet and hold public meetings, despite the requirements on capacity and gathering sizes. So the county took it a step further to further protect everybody, to, you know, maintain that this has to be the method. However, now we're in phase two, and their ordinance clearly clearly states that it can be done now physically. So for the July meeting and looking at further meetings, the supervisors would like to ascertain whether or not a larger meeting space that could better mitigate any risk with social distancing be kind of slated for that. So what we were going to suggest was the elementary school gym auditorium area to best be able to social distance and be flexible enough where we can move seats around and be able to accommodate additional people. It's a, it's a much more conducive space than our band room. And even our auditorium in the high school with, you know, kind of stuck seating. So we were hoping that that would be okay to start having some of our public meetings and also offer that as a public meeting space should they need it at the county level for their meetings.
Great.
That makes sense.
You mean inside the big building, not the auxiliary gym?
Correct, yes.
That's where our next meeting would be as well.
Yes, it would.
Yep. It seems like a great plan.
Awesome. Go ahead.
I think you should offer that.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think our county really has some essential business that we've all been holding off on that we need to get to. So this will definitely help move us forward while still being a lot safer than our current meeting spaces. So I appreciate that. All right, those are my COVID-19 updates for right now. The big one will be in July when we bring you our full division reopening plan. And if there are any calendar modifications that we need to make, we'll do it at that meeting. And that's why it's so important to have everything in front of you next month. Okay? Thank you. All right, budget update. So the supervisors did approve a bottom line for our budget at their last meeting, but they also approved in response to my request for the additional $150,000 in FY '20. They did approve that through supplemental appropriation. So that's going to be a great help for taking care of those COVID-19 related expenses that we've accrued. There's additional dollars that we potentially could access as well as we plan now for this reopening, that I anticipate will have quite a bit of additional expenses. We're already naming a few. So we are, I am in constant contact with Mr. Curry about those. And any way we can join forces and pool resource through our CARES Act funding, we're going to try to, you know, do that the best we can. So the new proposed budget, amended budget is here for you. I'm very happy that we were able to preserve many of our priorities. We did still include a step increase for all staff, which I'm very happy about that. We still, we have the second pre-K class that's ready to go. We also protected our behavior and eventionist position, which we think is absolutely going to be essential coming into the next school year with some of the needs our students have. So any questions about the new budget?
Were we able to continue with the the gifted money that was in the budget the last four or five years?
I'm sorry?
There was a $10,000 line item for gifted education?
Yes.
Remained in there?
You're, I think you mean the student success line that you all had put in. Yes, that's still there. We have not diminished anything that supports students or any of our programs like that, no.
Okay, great.
Any questions?
There was a, there was a question at one point about the cost for LFCC for our students, where parents had to Are you there?
Yes.
Where, where a student got credit, they had to, it was $158 or something?
So our
To be paid, but
Yeah, for our dual enrollment, there is a cost for credit assigned to that. If students take the course with one of our instructors at our school, or in this case, this past year, we were able to get the discount through RAPSC, which was a very nice collaboration, then they get a discounted rate. But yes, it's still around that about $158 per course that you take, which compared to what you would take at a college is much, much less expensive. So I know there is a group of us talking right now to maybe help with that. And I know Headwaters has talked about, you know, some possibilities with helping with that, too. Because our our goal is still to move forward with dual enrollment, hopefully with a goal of allowing that any kid, not just our Mountain Vista Governor's School kids who can get an associate's degree when they graduate, if they so choose. I'd like that to be available to any kid, but we need
Yeah, the Mount, it's my understanding, the Mountain Vista Governor's School kids do not pay that $158.
They do pay.
They do pay, yeah. The letter I got. And it's, it's a lot, a lot of horses are, you know, can be for college credit, yes. I just spoke with the executive director of Headwaters, actually earlier today, saying that they are looking into using a portion of scholarship funds that students could apply for in high school to go towards the fees in order to get
I think we ought, we should really investigate that, see whether or not, what if what if a youngster is on free or reduced lunch? Do we cover it, then?
Not always, but there are discretionary funds that they can apply for. However, it's a small pool of funding for those classes, and that is exactly what a group of us are now talking about, is how do we help that situation? Because we don't want the cost as a barrier to students being able to access coursework like many of our other kids. So that's something
How much trouble would it be to find out? Let's say, take last year's kids that took dual enrollment. enrollment and figure out what the total cost would, would be?
Yeah, and that's what we've done. We have actually come up with the numbers. I don't have.
I have some of those if you want them, Shannon. Sorry, I don't know if it's public comment.
Not yet, Lenny, but you can hold that. Yeah, we have it in an email. But yes, we do have the numbers of what it would potentially cost to do that. But the, the groups are working on it, and there's a lot of variables to that. So, you know, yeah, a lot of variables. So we'll be presenting more of that to you as we develop more of a plan. And but there, there is a work group looking at it because there's other pieces in play, too, like how, should we invest in just subsidizing tuition cost? Or should we really invest in credentialing teachers to have a greater impact on more? So those are the things we're looking at. But no, nothing final yet on that.
Okay.
Any other questions about the budget?
Rachel, you're muted. I see your mouth. I'm muted. Okay. You can see my mouth moving. I feel crazy talking in this echoey space. But I did want to comment on the article that we probably all saw about the increase in child abuse and neglect cases in our county. And I'm just glad that we have our social worker now and I'm glad we'll have the interventionists. I hope we can do all we can to increase those preventative services. And I bet we'll be catching more as kids come back to school. And I'm, you know, want to be prepared for that. So that's, that's good. It's good that that was preserved in this budget.
Absolutely. Okay, if there's no other questions, we will ask you to approve this so we can run contracts that are already a month behind what we did last year. So we will ask that you please approve that so we can get all our contracts out and back and stamped and all of that.
So moved.
And that's, that's on our, on our action items list as soon as we get after public comment. Do you have anything else, Grimsley?
No, sir, I do not.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to public comment, is there anyone, actually, Ms. Rogers, did anybody email you or call on the phone to submit a comment?
No, I did not receive anything.
Okay, good. And is there anyone that wants to make a comment this evening? If you could raise your hand using the little UI?
I do have.
There's something. You want to go ahead now, Rachel?
I do have a Headwaters report, but I think that the Headwaters director is on, is here. If she would like to make a report directly, that's.
I am here. Yes. I was just going to report that we've added two new board members to our board and Fred Catlin is now a board member as well as Kat Habib. So we are excited to have them. Fred brings a lot of nonprofit expertise along with some Montessori educational experience and Kat used to run our Next Step project, so has a deep history of Headwaters, which is great since our board is lacking that right now with many people, members that know much about Headwaters. And we're also excited to be a part of that dual enrollment working group. We, it kind of came about from, we got a request from a student asking if we had any monetary funds to help pay for that. And we went back to the board and said, do we? And we decided that would be important to look at with our emphasize, emphasis right now on trying to get students all the way through college. Maybe it would be better to front load that money with the kids that are already in high school versus trying to pay scholarships when they're in their junior or senior year. So that started that working group and we hopefully will have some great information to take back to the board to understand what we should do there. And we're excited to be a part of that summer programs that Shannon talked a little bit about. It looks like it's coming together. We had a great meeting today and it's really promising. I was very skeptical, but I'm very excited to see that they, they're going to provide services for a lot of kids for the month of July especially. So it's moving forward.
Great. Thank you. Rachel, anything to add?
That is perfect. Nothing to add.
And I don't see anyone else on this meeting. Is there anybody else that's on this meeting that that has anything to share this evening with the board? All right. Moving on then, we have action items. So I thought to make this a little easier, I think obviously the best thing to do is our roll call. But then if you, if I could just call the roll and then you can vote, it's the easiest way to handle this. So I'll make the motion that we approve the federal program applications. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a second for Mr. Grove, and we'll do a roll call. Vote, you know, aye. Mr. Grove?
Aye.
Ms. Bynum?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Rubin?
Aye.
And so, and so moved. I'll make the motion that we approve the budget changes as they were presented this evening. Is there a second?
Second?
Second.
We have a second. I think that was you, Ms. wasn't it?
It might have been.
Okay, and so we'll now vote Wesley Bell's aye. Mr. Grove?
Aye.
Ms. Bynum?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Rubin?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Our next, our next board meeting will be July the 14th at 6:30 and we're going, our target is to be at the elementary school auditorium. And but, but stay tuned. We'll now have a motion that I'm sure Mr. Grove has staged to go into closed session for the discussion of personnel. We will be in that session for how long, Ms. Grimsley? Five minutes, 10 minutes?
10 minutes.
10 minutes and then coming back out and making motion on personnel report. So we will now leave this Zoom session after the motion's made. Larry?
I move the board convening closed session for the following purpose, discuss and consider the appointment of staff for professional positions, resignations of professional positions pursuant to code, Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1.
That one. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And so we're going and we're going to leave the Zoom session and go get into the other one that, that Ms. Grimsley sent us earlier today, and then we'll be back in this one. So here we go.
Were there two Zoom sessions that we were given?
Yeah, on that email from Shannon.
Shannon sent you an email and it should be, the second one should be in that. Do you have that information before we leave?
To find it.
Okay, so I'm going to send you a, is there another way you'd like to see it, Larry? Can you check your school email account?
I'll, I'll just find it. I'll, I'll get there.
All right, we'll wait for you.
I'm sure I got it.
All right, we'll see. See you on the other side, folks.
Aye.
I'm trying to get my agenda back up here.
That was fast. We're getting better at this.
Yeah, just to just in time to quit, right?
Yeah.
I think Rachel Rachel beat me, babe. She's quick, quick draw. Okay. See, we have. We have Rachel, Larry, and Mr. Rubin. So we're all back.
Yes.
All right.
Well, dude, it's just a fun one day.
I'm not unmuted. I'll yell.
We'll be able to hear you.
Right, so let's let's go through the roll call and certify that only things related to closed session motion were discussed during closed session. Wesley Mills certifies, Mr. Grove?
Larry Grove certified.
Ms. Bynum?
Rachel Bynum certifies.
Ms. Meyer?
Lucy Ann Meyer certifies.
Mr. Rubin?
Chris Rubin certifies.
During during closed session, we heard the personnel report.
Wes, you have to certify.
I did. I did. I was first. Wesley Mills certifies.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's all right. I appreciate it, Larry, actually. Trying you trying to keep me out of trouble, right?
That's why I'm trying to.
Motion on. We heard their personnel report. Is there a motion to to accept the personnel report this evening? Which actually had our new the resignation of our band director and the hiring of a new band director on it. Is there a motion, anybody?
I so move.
We have a motion.
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Rubin. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye, Mr. Grove?
Aye.
Ms. Bynum?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Rubin?
Aye.
Wesley Mills, aye, and a motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I'm going to give that one to Chris because I can hear his voice, and I think that was Mr. Grove. Mr. Grove, would you second that?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion motion carries were adjourned. Thank you very much, and hopefully we'll see you when we're together in July.
Bye, guys.
Virtual hug.
See you in real life next month.
Hey, thanks. Thanks for everything, Shannon.
Thank you.
Thank you.